Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call the July 12th City Council meeting to order and welcome everyone here and at home on this very nice evening. The first item up is a public forum. The public forum is an opportunity for individuals to speak to us on any city-related issues except for those items which have already been heard by a hearings official or are on tonight's agenda as a public hearing. When you come up to speak, you'll have three minutes. Give your name, city of residence, and for Eugene Residence, your ward if you know it. The timer and lights indicate the time you have to speak. A yellow light will come on when you have 15 seconds to complete your comments. The red light indicates the end of three minutes. And we have tonight five people signed up. So the first one is, it looks like Matt Denberg, followed by Zachary Vishinoff. Matt?
Hello. My name is Matt Denberg. I'm a resident of Counselor Taylor's Ward. I'm here tonight representing the disciples of Dirt Mountain Bike Club, speaking to council in support of purchasing the Arley property, Arley &amp; Company property, in southeast Eugene that is directly south of the recently purchased property that is the Suzanne Arley Park, if I'm not mistaken, is the name of it. So it seems like a rare opportunity for us to get a good deal on park property for a change, pay a, you know, pretty reasonable price for it, and pick up a very large chunk of land that while it is on the edge of our, you know, city limits and urban growth boundary, could be, you know, in the long-term vision of the city, a great regional park and, you know, offer a lot of amenities for all parks users, as well as potential mountain bike opportunities and just the opportunity for larger areas to place trails and have everybody kind of get their own piece of the pie, as opposed to our common ridgeline scenario of a very thin linear corridor where there's very little options in planning for trails. So I don't know if there's a immediate timeline, you know, that Arley's bankruptcy is pressuring this to move forward before something else happens, but it does seem like this is a sudden opportunity and Johnny Medlin has indicated the city has an intent to purchase, but that city council has to actually authorize the official purchase of the land. I'm aware that there's money available in the 2006 Parks Bond. I'm not sure if it's enough to cover this fully, but I think it would be a great start at the very least and an opportunity to certainly secure a future for south Eugene's regional parks. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Zachary Vishinoff, followed by Steve Mertz.
Hello, Zachary Vishinoff, Ward 3. I was coming here tonight to bother the city manager a little more about this upcoming hearing in the research park, so I guess I can bother his assistant instead and just talk about the ways I think that if the city has a hearing coming up about an issue in the research park and they actually want to get some feedback from the community or some information, ways they could maybe cast a wider net as far as notification and maybe in advance of the hearing, putting out some kind of summary of exactly what the plan is for that city-owned parcel in the research park. Just to summarize for people who haven't been following it, the city and the U of O are proposing development of a parking lot near the Mill Race in the research park, north of the tracks. It's currently a site that is grassland and it's next to the urban farm. It's quite an idyllic little kind of buffer between the urban farm and the rest of the research park. The research park has a significant amount of surface parking. One of my concerns is that by not looking at what the surface parking that's already been created in the park, you could create more when maybe structured parking closer to Franklin, near the research park, would be a more environmentally sound way to put new parking in the neighborhood. I think the summary that you release approximately one week in advance of the hearing on the 28th should have some of the historical information on who owned the parcel and how the city ended up with it. It should have been considered for parkland. East campus area does have a shortage of city parkland. I don't see any reason why the summary shouldn't have some explanation of why the Parks Department or why the city didn't explore that, or maybe if they did, some information on why the surface parking is more appropriate. Also, the city is preparing to cede some land from the university near Franklin Boulevard to widen Franklin Boulevard. It seems like maybe a trade would be in order for this land. It's just very unclear on why the city's holding on to it and why the university's proposing it. Who is proposing it? I think that's an important thing to know before the hearing. Is this Chris Raiming at the university's request, or Johnson Hall, their lawyers, or is this a city proposal? So I urge you to explain that to the public about a week before the hearing. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Steve Mertz is next, followed by Mary Salinas.
Hello, everybody. My name is Steve Mertz, owner of Black and Planet Cafe, founding member, or one of the founding members of MTB Eugene, mountain bike advocacy group here in town. I'm also here to talk about the proposed Arley purchase property in southeast Eugene, south of LCC. I think this is a great opportunity for the city to expand its park program. It's a reasonable cost. The land is not being put to use at this time. The more and more I talk to parents and the community members here in town, they're all looking for more opportunities for recreation for themselves, for their kids. More and more of them are talking about mountain biking is a great option, that their kids are loving it. It's just a great opportunity for the city to really put another outdoor recreation opportunity out there. So I would really strongly encourage you to really consider this great opportunity that we have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Salinas is next, followed by Melissa Mona.
My name is Mary Salinas. I still don't know what word I meant. My address is downtown Eugene, so I'm a spokesperson for the homeless, as you know. The newspaper today is, if you've seen it, is full of very sad figures about the increase in poverty in the United States. It's growing. And I am a alarmist about global warming. I predict it will continue to grow. So I'm hoping that you will, like, put your heads together, get your courage together, and deal with what's happening to us in the future. Meet it with courage. Don't pretend like it's not happening. If we fight, I think we have a chance, but if we forget, so many more poor people, so many homeless people, if you do not learn, this is me, if you do not learn to integrate them, they will run you over. I said to one of the commissioners, you know, it would be better to have a swarm of locusts than a swarm of human beings. And he said, "Why?" He said, "Because human beings will come into your kitchen, they will steal your food, and they will kill you." I come from the streets, I come from hungry, we're hungry. We're already hungry. The homeless in your city are hungry. I have a Eugene Mission story. A man just told me, he went to the Eugene Mission, he's black, I think he got special treatment. They said, "You can't come in until you take a shower." He said, "Yeah, I'll eat and then I'll take a," he said, "No." They said, "No, you have to shower now. You can't come into the building." So he had to strip in front of them. They let him take a shower in this public shower place, they did not give him a towel. Then they gave him dirty pajamas and they put him in a bed with dirty sheets. This is the Eugene Mission, $8 million last year. We need you to lead. We are going to be more and more of us, and these are only simple stories. I want you to cut the Mission and White Bird and all the people who get money to help the desperately homeless. I want you to gather the money. Stop giving it, spreading it out, gather it up, and deal with it. Many cities, this is nothing special, but I think we could do something about this valley. Clean the air up in this valley, learn to grow food for this valley. Don't think about the big picture, the Eugene Emerald Valley. And the homeless are scattered everywhere and we are hungry and we are bleeding and we're sick. They put us out of the hospital. A man I met this week, he had, he got pneumonia. They put him in the hospital. While he was there, he had a stroke. They let him out five days later with a cane and a medicine. And when I saw him, he was very sick and he sat down and he said, "You have some water." And he did not want to go to the Mission. He stayed on the street, sick like that. He had no money, no food, no water. He was staying out on the streets because he refused to go to the Mission. They only changed the sheets once a week. Thank you.
Melissa Mona is next.
Good evening, please. Counselors and mayor, my following comments are as a private citizen, and I am speaking only for myself this evening. On my way here tonight, I walked down High Street and I was struck, literally, by the umbrellas shading several outdoor seating tables at several businesses, specifically on High Street between 10th and Broadway. That caused me to take note as I continued my journey, that if the same no-hanging-out pedestrian right-of-way boundaries were painted on that area using the same dimensions as those recently implemented near LTD and the library, many businesses would be in violation. Fairness is always a fundamental consideration when implementing policy. Either all sidewalks should have this delineation, equally identifiable and equally enforced, or none of them should. To do otherwise might create the impression that our city does not apply its laws and policies in a fair and consistent manner.
Thank you. Going to close the public forum and ask for comments from city council. I think we would, I'm going to suggest to the folks who came over the purchase of the Arley property, I don't know whether councils will appreciate me saying this or not, but one of the ways that we get conversations forward is getting enough, if we have enough counselors who are interested, to pursue an idea. So I just suggest they talk with their counselors and see if there's enough interest to move forward on that. And in terms of the research park city property, I'm hoping that we'll get some information on that in our packet soon. All right, councilor calling.
Well, I'd like to address the comments made about the potential purchase of the Arley &amp; Company property for parks purposes. Couple of weeks ago, I brought that up at a council work session and suggested that we at least look into the possibility of that. This is based on the conversation that I had out in the community and that I had also learned that Arley &amp; Company had already approached Johnny Medlin some time back about this particular piece of property. I had a meeting with Johnny Medlin this afternoon about another issue and the potential purchase discussion came up, and they're still looking into the possibility of that. Basically doing some due diligence on, you know, the cost, you know, the long-term effect, where we as far as operation maintenance versus, you know, purchasing the property. There's a lot of different issues that have to be addressed before it's brought back to the council for a discussion, so we're a long way from making any decision one way or the other. So if that's something that the people in this community are interested in doing, you know, I would suggest that, you know, you keep bringing it to our attention. So when that conversation does come up, we have some sort of input from the community one way or the other. But we are, I think we're still quite a ways off from making a final decision on that at this point.
Just going to, before we move on, just want to just make a comment that the public forum is a chance for anybody to come and express an opinion to us. So that is what it's there for, an opinion or wanting the council to know what they think about something. Sometimes we hear from people things that are observations, they are not necessarily validated, but they are, people have the right to come and bring those to us for us to hear, and then it's up to us to find out if they merit, are valid or merit any consideration. So just wanted to make that comment. Okay. Yes. Councilor Ties.
Thank you, mayor, and thank you, everybody, for coming down on this warm, beautiful evening. I just want to respond to Mary Salinas, because, Mary, you've been before us probably four or five times where you've spoke about the homeless issue, and I really appreciate your due diligence on coming down, but I'm just really kind of challenged by some of your, and you've left before, so I didn't speak to it before because I didn't want to talk to the air. So thank you for staying. I just want to kind of respond a little bit. You know, we don't, a couple of things. We have a commitment to helping people who are homeless. We do not give money to the Mission. I can tell you that right now, just, I know that for a fact. I was on the Human Services Commission for many years. That's all funded by private dollars. We have no impact on anything they do, but we do have a consortium with the Human Services Commission that we funnel our money through the city of Eugene into the different programs. So if you ever have an opportunity to go to those meetings and review their minutes, that's really where you can kind of have that conversation and impact. I see you all shaking your head like you know what I'm talking about, but I just wanted to make sure that you understand that, that we don't support the Mission with any public dollars, those are all private dollars, and we don't really have any impact on what they do. And I know that they are, I know people are challenged at times by the work that they do, but I personally think that they do pretty good work overall. I know that there are people there who have challenges with some of the work that they do, but I'm glad for the work that they do for the people who are successful that come out of that organization. And thank you for coming down, Mary, and I hope you keep keeping that subject up. And I do appreciate your comments also, Melissa. Thank you.
All right. I think we all appreciate everyone's comments and encourage you to keep coming and talking to us about the things that you think are important. Next is a consent calendar. Council President.
Moved to approve the items on the consent calendar.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. I don't see anyone in the queue. Would you please vote on the consent calendar? Eight in favor and none in opposition. It passes. The next item on our agenda tonight is the ordinance concerning the Walnut Station Mixed Use Center.
The council was purposeful tonight to take action on the ordinance concerning Walnut Station Mixed Use Center. We provided a motion to the council on June 1st. So tonight, the ordinance will include adoption of the new plan, the requirement plan, specific area, and staff. Just one quick line. The ordinance was provided in Chicago and with providing a benefit date. That's a holdover from earlier draft. In fact, this ordinance does not grant a special effective date. So before the ordinance, assuming it's passed on tonight, preventing signature will remove that and provide a benefit. No need for that.
Okay. All right. Want to put the motion on the table?
Yes, I do, mayor. Moved to adopt an ordinance concerning the Walnut Station Mixed Use Center, including an ordinance version A with exhibits A through I.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Counselor Zelenka.
The Walnut Station plan that we have in front of us is important because it's first of many mixed-use center plans that'll be coming in front of us, so it's important to get it right here and have it go forward and then see what happens and then hopefully replicate it as we move forward. Very good work, very good plan. Lots of people collaborated on this plan, which I think is the hallmark of the plan, the collaboration associated with it. It's taken a lot of time and a lot of public input, and I think it's very good. I wanted to make two little minor tweaks to it, and you have those two motions in front of you. The first one relates to a comment that came from Art Farley, who commented that there was discussion about a neighborhood plan, especially north of Franklin Boulevard, where there could be as much as 1,400 living units in that area in full buildout without a park really near it, except for the Fairmount Neighborhood Park, which is really tiny little pocket park. And he said, "Just because we couldn't come to an agreement about where to put the park now doesn't mean that we should drop the concept that we should still have that in the plan." And I agree with that. And what this motion does, and I'll put it forth at the appropriate time, is to say that we should have a park in that part of the Walnut Station specific area plan and on the north side of Franklin Boulevard, and a small urban pocket park, and to figure that out later, but to have it in the plan. Second one relates to the study for university use. And like the traffic study, or unlike the traffic study, the traffic study actually has a starting date and an ending date. The university use process or study only has a start date with no end date. And what I hope to accomplish here is just to put an end date. I asked staff what would be an appropriate end date for that, 12 months or 18 months, and they came back with 18 months. So this date reflects an 18-month period for that university study process to run its course, so it doesn't drag on forever and ever. So like the traffic study, it has a beginning date and an end date, and that's all that that's intended to accomplish. Should I, can I make those one at a time? So I move to add the following new policy as policy R of the Walnut Station Specific Area Plan on page 135 of the council's agenda packet, and to re-letter the existing policy R to be policy S. The motion reads, the new section would read, "Due to the expected increase in residential density and lack of access to existing neighborhood parks, there is a goal of establishing a new neighborhood park in this area. Staff will work with landowners to find a suitable site of appropriate size and configuration for a new neighborhood park on the north side of Franklin Boulevard in the Walnut Station Specific Area Plan."
Is there a second to that motion?
Oh, second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Further discussion. Counselor Taylor, did you want to discuss this, or do you have something else? Okay, so is there any discussion on this motion? Staff have anything they wanted to talk about about this motion? Nope. All right, ready to vote then. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate. Or just vote. Eight in favor and none in opposition, so it passes. All right, the second motion?
Thank you for that vote, councilors. The second motion reads, "I move to revise policy H of the Walnut Station Specific Area Plan on page 134 of the council's agenda packet to add the following sentence at the end of the policy, that this report shall be completed by October 30th, 2012."
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Further discussion on this motion? I don't see anyone, so would you please vote on this one? Eight in favor and none in opposition. It passes.
Thank you, councilors.
So now we're back to the main motion as amended, and Counselor Taylor.
I move to substitute ordinance version B.
Is there a second to that motion? Want to explain it?
Yes, this would be that the hearings were before the planning commission rather than a hearings official.
Is there a second? I see none.
Good.
Okay.
Then I can.
Okay, all right.
Then I can speak, right? I think there's more opportunity for the public to be involved if it's a planning commission than if it's just one person that no one knows anything about.
Okay.
And that's my reason. I know the planning commission suggested it, and I just, I think it's more accessible to people than is a hearings officer.
Counselor Zelenka, did you want to speak to this, her motion?
Yeah, could you talk to the standard practice that we have? This would be an exception to that and what the opportunities are for public input into that process.
The design review is proposed as a type 2 land use application, and in our current code, most type 2 land use applications, site reviews, adjustment reviews, standards reviews, are, follow the process that we're proposing in ordinance A, which is that the hearings official is the deciding body on appeal of those applications. And so that's what the city manager's recommendation is, is that we maintain that path through the hearings official. The proposal for version B is to change that, and so that design review applications would rather be heard on appeal by the planning commission rather than the hearings official.
And the opportunities for input?
Well, they're actually the same. They both go through the same type of notice, that nothing changes in terms of the appeal rights, the opportunities to comment, appeal fees, they're all the same. It's just the body is a different body, hearings official, as opposed to the planning commission. Everything else is the same.
They get to testify, and the hearings official hears the testimony, just like the planning commission would. Are there any other exceptions to type 2 where a hearing is official is not the appeals body?
Well, is there not in the adjustment review, major adjustment reviews?
Not yet. Um, there's a question around that.
That's everything.
Adjustment review.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. I don't see any further comments, so now would you please vote on Counselor Taylor's One in favor and seven in opposition. It does not pass, so now we're back to the main motion as amended. See any other, now I do. Counselor Zelenka?
I'll do second round. Couple other comments. I think the big issue in these mixed-use centers that is going to be parking. And parking is a huge issue in how it gets dealt with in all parts of town, downtown, other places, but in these mixed-use centers, it becomes a particularly big issue. And I think it's one that we, I'm not sure we have it down right yet, and which is why we're actually looking at this and coming back and doing that evaluation and assessment and see if we did it right and change what needs to be changed in order to make it work right. So I think we're going to keep on doing the parking part for a while until we get it right. The plan calls for both the trackings and parking studies, and I believe that when we pass these plans, that's an implied commitment by the council to follow through on those. They do have an expense associated with the traffic study, and it does anyway. There's an opportunity coming up with the alley vacation that the U of O is going to do, that part of that money could be to pay for this traffic study, so, which is in the immediate area, it's right in that exact area. So I think that would be an appropriate nexus, an appropriate use of those funds. So keep that in mind when it comes back around to us. And my final comment is related to form-based code, which is another big part of this, what we're doing here at the Walnut Station. And I'm willing to move forward on form-based code, but it makes me nervous, especially with regard to its impacts on livability and maybe the types of inappropriate development that could happen, the traffic, the noise, and the litter impacts that these types of development can have that are different from, that might be different in different mixed-use centers than the one at Walnut Station. But I think it's important for us to realize that form-based code in Eugene anyway, this is the first time we're doing it. It's an experiment, and I think it, while it makes me nervous, I think we should move forward with it, but let's go slow and make sure we get it right and that it meets its potential as we move forward. So I'm not, I want to see what happens here before we just, all of a sudden, just do form-based code all over the city. Thanks.
Counselor Taylor.
My comment's similar to Counselor Zelenka's. I'm concerned about the parking, about the impact on existing businesses, especially the veterinary business, which people cannot ride the bus to a business with their dogs, and they can't walk across town with them. And it has a very potentially devastating effect on at least one business, and I've heard secondhand that it may have bad effects on other businesses, also nearby residents. So I know this, that many of the supporters, not all, but many of them, don't live anywhere near there, and that concerns me somewhat, that they won't be hurt, but some people who are already there with a business or with a home may be damaged by our not taking care of the parking situation. Thank you.
Okay, I think we're ready to vote on this one. Would you please vote? That's eight in favor and none in opposition, so that passes, and we'll move on to the next item, and that's the Human Rights Commission membership.
Brief introduction. This is a new one, but it's on the consent calendar. We had pulled it and agreed to bring it back later, but this request is from the Human Rights Commission. They're asking for your concurrence on removing a member who missed a series of meetings, three in consecutive, and asked three in consecutive, and asked to miss an additional three or four into the future. And the commission felt like that was going to be troublesome for getting the work done, and have asked that you would concur with them in removing this particular commissioner from the commission and filling that position differently.
Thank you. I put it on the table.
I move to concur in the Human Rights Commission's determination that the incumbent in position six has failed to properly represent the commission due to attendance, and direct that the position be filled from the non-commission members of the commission's standing committees per Eugene Code 2.270.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Counselor Polling.
Well, I'd just like to add that when this first came to us on the consent calendar, I was a little upset because of the lack of information. I see that the memorandum that's from the chair, Lynda Hamilton, is the same one that we got, we received before. But in the interim, and I don't remember if it was a conversation or an email that I received outlining pretty much in detail the attendance record, and it pretty well explained that, in more detail, that this person, for whatever reason, was unable to make the meetings as required. So, I'm okay with supporting the motion and wishing this member well in their, in her endeavors in the future.
I appreciate your comments, Counselor Polling, and it's my understanding that the person that is serving on, understands this and is okay with it. And I hope that the, she will again apply when it's a better time in her life, when she has the time to do this. So, I think we all want to just make clear, this has nothing to do with performance, this has just to do with, it didn't work with this person's life at this time, and so we hope that they, that she applies another time. Counselor Taylor.
Thank you. I have a problem with a commission deciding to unappoint someone or appoint someone, and I'll be voting against this.
So, I will only make one follow-up comment to that, and that is, that is the way the commission is supposed to do their business at this time. They make that recommendation to us, and we get to say yes or no. So, that, it is in our hands, and we act on a recommendation. Counsel Ortiz.
Sorry for, I hit the wrong button, but I was in the queue. I just want to say that I appreciate the explanation, and I understand, but I just want to caution that this rule is applied equally to other commission members, that this becomes an issue with them, and that this isn't a situation of whatever, but I just, you know, that it's applied equally.
Counselor Zelenka.
Two comments. One, well, I concur with what Counselor Ortiz just said, but the, I agree with what Counselor Taylor said, although the code is very clear. This is the process that we have to follow. So, I intend to support the motion. But I think it also, we should take a hard look at, and I think there's a poll going around, to take a look at whether or not all of our commissions operate under the same bylaws, which isn't true right now. Different commissions operate under different bylaws by ordinance. And so, I think having them all operate by the same set of rules is probably a good idea, and I support that. And so, following this motion, what happens next on the commission? They appoint the person from, it's one of their standing committees, correct? Do they have a person in mind yet, or?
I'm not sure. I'll let Holly answer.
Thank you. In the past, the practice has been that the appointment is made from a community member from the standing committees. Right now, we have Accessibility Committee and Education and Outreach. The leadership of the commission will poll them and see who is interested in forwarding their application, and then those recommendations and applications can come up to you with a broader application, so you can see their background, and they answer the same supplemental questions. And then, right now, it looks like, just by doing a verbal poll with them, there might be about four people interested in coming up from the committees and applying.
So, does the commission just forward one name? Or do they forward everybody that wants to apply, and then we pick from that?
There are some other factors. For example, former attendance, if they've demonstrated past challenges coming to meetings, it might not necessarily be a name you'd put forward now for, so we avoid problems like this. You know, someone who has demonstrated commitment and is participating at a level that we think would warrant forwarding. The commissioners will make, I think they will review the applications, though, and write a supplemental memo saying this person has participated at this level, and done this project, and this project, to give you more information, to make a great appointment.
Thank you. I just want to clarify one thing for Counselors Zelenka, and that is that we did not finish with our process session, and that this issue was still on the list for us to deal with in our process session. And since the process session, staff has been talking about this, and have come to the conclusion that perhaps we need to workshop on a number of issues around commissions and committees. And so, I think they're going to bring forward a whole package of issues for us to consider, and this will be one of them. So.
And I wanted to apologize that the last meeting, muddying, adding to the confusion a little bit by lumping the third absence with the request for leave, I think I confused things a little bit more. So, I regret and apologize for that. And when it was a very thorough and deliberate discussion in the commission, it was the questioning that I think added a little confusion, so I wanted to apologize for that.
Thank you. I just want to say, I think we all kind of learned through this process that there is an issue around uniformity of how we deal with things, and a fairness, and so, this is good, we're going to go to work and try to fix this up, so. All right. Ready to vote? All of you, please vote. Six in favor and two in opposition, it passes. And with that, we are finished with the business of this evening. Thank you all very much. Go and enjoy the evening.